Be with each one of us, let your words might flow through brother Prakash who is amongst us, that thank you for bringing him amongst us. Thank you for using him mightily all these years as he is going to minister amongst us, that your word might richly be edifying each one of us, that we may apply to our lives and use it for the extension of thy kingdom. And all those who have not known you as a personal savior, that their hearts may be pricked and that they may receive you as a personal savior. All those who are in different situations, that you talk to them so that their situations may be met and encouraged according to your word. Dear Lord, we pray for those who are on their way, bring them safely over here. All those who could come today, bless them abundantly from the beginning to the end. Let your divine presence be richly be bested upon us and we commit this precious time into your loving hands, that your name alone be glorified. We thank you and praise you and worship you and pray in the most holy precious name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Manasara Pogadhanuni Asharya Karya Mulan Manasara Pogadhanuni Asharya Karya Mulan Mudamara Paadhaninnu Atisundaru Daavaniyoo Mudamara Paadhaninnu Atisundaru Daavaniyoo Kruthaagnatha Chellintun Pratidani Koraku Nenu Kruthaagnatha Chellintun Pratidani Koraku Nenu Kriestoni Ande Trukthi Pondhe Haashinchadanu Kriestoni Ande Trukthi Pondhe Haashinchadanu Jeevanadhini Naahudayamuloh Pravahimpa Cheyumaya 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 Suvatalloni Patralanni Sriyesuni Pogaduchunda Sakshi Ganundupatragachesi Satyamutoni Impumutandriya Satyamutoni Impumutandri Lokasha Thonindi Upponguchu Margambone Tapithi Lokasha Thonindi Upponguchu Margambone Tapithi
Praise the Lord. Good evening everybody. Venaka seatla lo indukundupero teleedu. Mundu seatla indukodleseera teleedu. So ala kapurlin gorrelu valay chidiripoka. Kunchum, you can fill the gaps. Indukante, aalasinga ochinwaralu. Okavala untay joinavachu. Rata nakko eye contact bond undi meetha matladanki, right? So ala places unchakandi, you can fill the gaps by chasing. Ekadakeli na, prapanchamanta bharti lelaga kuchuntar. Indukotheli du. So you can come forward. Indo Seattle Christian Fellowship antanandi? Yeah. Indalo modhatisari ilam matladanki, devadi chinnukrupunvattiyani sutistu. Nannu invite chesna brother Rajeshan brother Ravi garki. Varii team antatiki, thanki instrumentalai na Suresh and Bhuvnaki. Then nani rozu host chesna twenty, nannu na wife Shivaani. Saadaran ga athijimichchi chustuna twenty. Mari FF Raki and Deepthi ki. Yes, Krishna varishubha pradhanamuloh undanalu. And Indo Seattle Christian Fellowship lo onna prabhu nandu preemaina varla andariki kodha. And me dhvara ochinastnehi tolaki kodha. Shubha halu undanalu telejaskunta unnanu, chal mandi telesinavalu kodakalustunaru. So I feel so happy, it's a joy in the Lord to meet all of you. Irozina Christavam gurunchi konni vishalo aalo chenchedhami saayentram. Indukante, Christaviani manu, manuka anukulanga. Mana paristitulaku anugunyanga. Mana villain vishki saripoyinatuka. Leka mana churchika ladhallo nchususi. Mana churchki taginatuka. Leka YouTube lo prasangal chusi. Ade Christavam ankunni. Daniki tagatuka. Lekpothe, manaki anta comfortable ga untundo. Anta comfortable ga danni manu march cheskunno. Irozina, Christavam, Christava visvasam, leka Christava visvasa jivitam. Leka Christava bhakti, Christian faith life or Christian piety. Anadi, rather than matching with the word of God, it matches to our needs, our wishes and our whims. And sometimes even Mana sanghalo manukunnatuanta akast understanding thoti, manu meerparchkunna de, Christavam ankuntnamanu. But there is a Christianity which is a pure Christianity, which is a biblical Christianity. Christaviani okavala kolavadaliste, danikolavgalgina okeva ka kolamano, geetray. It's not a church or it's not your understanding or your experience and my experience. It is the word of God. Vakyamokkate daniki kolamano. Vakyamokkate Christaviani nirvachinchigaladu, nirdesinchigaladu. Niyantrinchigaladu, nadipinchigaladu. So that's why, vakyamokkane understanding anadi, mana Christava jivitaniki chala avasaram. Christavam anadi ikkada kuchunantasepundadi kadu. It is a 24 by 7 business. So mana jivita mantakoda rangariste Christavam. Krodikariste Christavam. It's not just a Sunday service. So ancheta, Christaviani manan chudali. Irozo Christaviani manan chusinapudu. It is plagued with many diseases which are against scriptures. We can name many. Christianity today is plagued with sectarianism. Sectarianism means, okagumpu katasi, ide goppa. Idi ithralakante goppa, vere gumpulakante goppa ankodam. Mirandar nee jeppe vishalaki sakshle, prachekangame adagakarle. Sectarianism lo casteism undi. Sectarianism lo denominationalism undi. Sectarianism lo I-ism, E-ism, regionalism chala unnai. And bharti elu amerikani munchethintaravata. Ande trumpu malle venakipampichya anta munchethesintaravata. Ikkada, this kind of plagues, diseases, bhaga wantabatesni. Ikkadaguda kulani techibeti even kulummedu kodapihajri jastinar manwaralu. E universities lo. Kulong goputanangurinch. Ande bharti deshinlo kulathathum medu cheshteparleedu. Nakulong goppani aakulommedu pihajri jastinar. Which is so absurd. Christaviani oksectarianism ekadu, sectarianism lo casteism ekadu, denominationalism kodha, irozo padajastondi. Everybody thinks that their church is good. Charles Purdon oksar church goinchok mat unnadu. There is no perfect church on this face of earth. If there is one, if there is one, the moment you join, it becomes imperfect unnadu. Irapanchan lo, perfect church antu ledu, unto okavala, nuu joinenu markshano, adi imperfect type potundi. Because church is comprised of imperfect people. We are still being sanctified by the Lord. We are not perfect people. Though we are saved, though we are under the blood of Christ, though we have that privilege of being in Christ, but we are still on the pathway of perfection, but we are not attained perfection. So, these things spoil Christianity or take us away from the real biblical Christianity. And there is a nism which again plagues the church today is self-eism. Ande manu, maname goppa ankuntontan matta. Iroje speaker lo kodachal mandala gayperan matta. Chal chesin chustunte, one man show kanputta untadi, that is self-eism. Iro YouTube lo kodha, okkale ne justan untarmati, kevar kanputta. Periku pastor gare gani, pastor garenta pakkan gorrelu undal gada. Okugu gorrelu kodan putta. Anta pastor gare kanputta untar. Mahaita koduku kodlu, kutru, alludu. Kodmandi konchum vesilupati chere, bharil kodastinar. Adiintagani, bartha speaker aite, pastor aite, bharitappakonda singer avali. Now this kind of Christianity loke vilpayam manu. And particularly, people like you, amerikalonna NRI Christians chusinapudu. There is another plague that really troubles us. Mana spirituality in podjese dentinde, it is materialism. Neenunalpa idrola indha amerika kochi. Mana NRI Christians chustunnan chal dagarga. Spiritual vishal kochi depdiki, challeyi bhaktan kunnaru. There is a kind of a complacency. Kani secular material blessings degir kochi radu, chal etla, dinkaka avalankunnar. Now that's the Christianity that we are living in. Me church lo konchum samayam ichar nakku, thank God for that. Chal churches lo, anna meekpadenimshalu, padenimshalu antinaran matta. Ponwar dagir samayam ledu ankunte, varla long program lo chala vaatik samayam unda varliki, vakyanki takku samayam undi. Araganta nalpanimshali cheywaralu, aadhimshalu daatite, varl paapu vaachusukuntnar. Pil enjastaru, i nalpanimshali epintata gavagavraadinjasyinti kaltarantae velru. Idi rendaganthi untay, church service, adi nalaganthi untadi, hangout. Mi saadanangense boonchastarandi, intidegara? Ah,ense boonchastarintidegara? Mir work from home lo kodamir mahainta half hour undadu meeku bojjananki. Kani ikkada ense boonchastaru? Neenokain nadigan directga, amerikaloni. Entendi mi paristithi ente, kasar weekend gandandi chill out kosamastavan unnadu. Paapu edarduvaadi manchidain mechkovali. Now that's not Christianity. Mir last benchle indukuchunna ranen, nalaujinchanan matta. Adi nakarthen galigana, ootmatru nakarthen, mana jivithamala matru, yes prabhan last benchle kuchavetam. It's satyam. And manu manukuntam, in chala goppa Christolam, ikad kochi manu adbhutanga chesastunavam ankuntam manu. And chala vishalam manu pride thesekuntnam kodha. Kodmandi spiritual pride undi, kodmandi secular pride kodha undi. Now this actually kills your devotion for the Lord. Please, please understand this. Neenanduka nee konnavachinali me drishtikiti skuravalan, neenankuntanannu. And I am not a speaker who flip through the scriptures and just close it and pray. I am a speaker who reads the verse and expounds it, so I take time. 2 Corinthians chapter 13 verse 5, me kosanteli lo chadutinannu. 2 Corinthians chapter 13 verse 5, if anybody cannot follow Telugu, they can look through the English version of the scripture. Miru visvasam galavari unnaro ledo, mimunu mira shodinchukoni chuchkunadi. Mimunu mira parikshinchukunadi. Miru brushtelu kani edala. Yesu Kriestu milo unnada, nimimunu gurchi mira erugara. Miru visvasam galavari unnaro ledo, mimunu mira shodinchukunadi, mimunu mira parikshinchukunadi. Paraka Telugu version chadutinannu. Miru nijamayana visvasila, kada, ani deliskovalankunte, mimunle miru parishodinchukavali. Milo Yesu Kriestu unnattu anupinchadan ledha. Miru i parikshalo odipote, Kriestu milo undoneatte. So it is high time that we need to look deep into our souls and Christian lives and examine where we are in our Christian life, where we are in our faith life. Are we really exercising this devotion to the Lord? Devotion to the Lord is not just singing. Devotion to the Lord is not just sitting, you know, in a disciplined way in a church. Devotion to the Lord is not just listening to a message or participating in the table. Devotion to the Lord is a lifelong attitude. It is your life service to the Lord, not just a lip service. That's a devotion to the Lord. The true devotion to the Lord is actually sandwiched between Sunday and Sunday. It is from Monday to Saturday. Wherever you are, whatever you do, are we at the, puts Christ at the centre of our life? Do we live a Christ-conscious life? Now that's devotion to the Lord. That's a Christian faith life. कोण्य negative सूसिन तरवाता, नेनु positive लो कोस्तानो. Biblical Christianity is against materialism. Now what is materialism? मानकी मटीरियल नीड्स कावाली. We need a house, we need a job, we need salary, we need a car, particularly a country like this. It's not a luxury at all. But craving after material needs is materialism. Needs actually follow whether you pray or not, that's what the Bible says. But when you are after needs, needs become greed. My God shall supply all your needs, अन्नाड़, Paul, Philippians, लो. Not all your greed's, अन्लेद. Now there is a thin line between the need and the greed. अदि मानो, प्रभूतो उन्ते तप्पा मानके, अदि अर्थन कादु. I give you certain examples. John's Gospel, Chapter 2, Verse 23 and 24. मी कोसम चादुतनानो, John's Gospel, Chapter 2, Verse 23 and 24. आयना पस्का पंडुगा समयमुना, एरिशलेम लो उन्डगा, आपंडुगलो अनेकुलु आयन चेसिना सूचेक क्रियलन चूची, आयन नाममंदु विस्वासम उन्चरी. अनेकुलु आयन चेसिना सूचेक क्रियलन चूची, आयन नाममंदु विस्वासम उन्चरी. Miracle Christians, 21st century Christians की, ई क्रिस्टियन्स की एम पद्धत तेड़ा लेदो. Miracle centers उन्नाय, माको इंडिया लो. मर मीक इंडियानी चालकाल मेपिन्गा बट्टी वच्चे सी, मीक तेलुसुंडा उपवच्चु. तेलिकपुते मीर धन्यलो, तेलिस्ते पापु मीका धन्य दोरक्नटे. So miracle Christians उन्नार ईरोजना. वाली इकनुंची कोकटपल्लीकी, इकनुंची वाइजाकी डब्ली अनुम्बस्तरंडे, वाल्को miracle जरगाली. मीलो गुड उन्तर, गनपटर कापोते. Miracle जरकपुते, वाले देवुने नामलेर. Now इकड़े एसु क्रिस्तु वारो, अनेकमयन miracles चेसिन तरवाता, अनेकुलु आयन यंदु विस्वासम उन्चर, that's what happened in Jerusalem. इधि कानाविवाहम लो आयना, राक्षा रस्म चेसिन तरवाता नेलनी, वेंटने जरिगिने ट्वेंटी इंसिडेंट अन्माता. Now look at the reaction of Christ, which is very surprising. Now miracle Christians पत्ला, जीज़स योका attitude छुडंडी, आइते, English लो, but. एसु अंधरणी एरिगिनवाडु कनका, आयन तन्नुवारी वसेमु चेसकुनलेदो, आयन मनुष्यनी आंतरियमुनो एरिगिनवाडु. He did not commit himself to them, biblical language लो दान अर्थमेनंटे, he rejected their faith. He rejected their faith. Why so? इंदुका नी? Why it is not a true faith? And इन कुंचो, इन कुंचो harsh विषयल चोद्दां. इनका कटिनमयन विषयलो, digest चेसकोले विषयलो, ई miracle Christians गुरिंची चोद्दां. मत्तेसु वर्ता पनिड़ा अच्छाय, मोपैतमिदा वच्चनो, मीक चादुतनानो. वेबिचारले न चेड्डतर्मु वारो, सूचेक क्रियनु आडुकुचुन्नार. अवर आडुतनारटा? वेबिचारले न चेड्डतर्मु वारो. मल्ली, same Jesus, same Gospel, Chapter 16, Verse 4. वेबिचारले न चेड्डतर्मु वारो, सूचेक क्रियनु आडुकुचुन्नार. Now I was astonished to see Jesus speaking with such a harsh language. Miracle लाडिगिते, आयन वेबिचारले निंदु कंटुनाडु. That is the problem with materialism. Now उनकोकर कोडे नेचुभी चिया पुण्डे, नेनु ट्राई तै एक्सप्लेन देत. John's Gospel, Chapter 6, Verse 26 and 27, this is actually happened just after a miracle. आयना वेलमंदकी बोजनम पंचपट्टेडो, he did a miracle. And immediately, there was a kind of a following, एसु क्रिस्तु वारी मेंटा, पड़पेर जनो. एसु क्रिस्तु वारी मल्ली तप्पिंचकोंदरुता अन्नाड़, तप्पिंचकोनी आयना, अवतेली वोड्डीकु गुड़ एल्पेडो. मल्ली सायंत्र वच्चेडो, वाली इनका नक्की अकड़े उन्नार आयन कोसम, एलागेन आयन पटकोवालीयनी. Now प्राय नांटुन माटल छुडंडी. 26 नुंच्च तादिते, एसु, मीर सूचनल्लु चुच्चतवल्न कादु. गानी, रोटेलु बुझिंची त्रुप्ति पुंडुतवल्ने, नन्नो वेदुकुचुन्नार, नीमी तोनी सेमिगा चेप्पचुन्नानो. अक्षयमयन आहारमु करको कष्टपड़कुडी, गानी नित्य जीवमु कलगुजे, अक्षयमयन आहारमु करके कष्टपड़डी. American Christians तो देवड़ माटल अर्थनाड़. Materialism तो उन्ना समसे अंतंते, अदि प्रभून प्रेमिंचदो, प्रभु इच्छे वस्तुल्नु प्रेमिस्तदे. We love the gifts that God gives, but not the God himself. इधि चाला कष्टम, इधि आत्मविमर्श चेसकोड़ो. Now वीले नेम अंतुनाड़ अंतायना, वेबिचारलु अंतुनाड़. अमेरिका लो, अमेरिकन लैंग्वेज लो चप्पलंटे, playboys अन्माता. Now what is the difference between a husband and a playboy? A husband, true husband, loves the wife, not just her body. Wife as a person. But a playboy only loves the body, not the person. श्रीरान्नी मात्रमे प्रेमिंचेवाडु, वेबिचारी. विक्तिनी प्रेमिंचेवाडु, स्त्रीलो, निजमयन बर्ता प्रेमिकुड़ो. Now जीज़स नी प्रेमिंचाल्सन, अंता प्रेमिंचकुण्डा? You know, जीज़स इच्छेवाटी कोसम, अरुलु चाचिनपुड़ू, you end up in materialism. And that kills your devotion to the Lord. नवीरात्रि मानो आत्मविमर्श चेसकोवाली, मानो विस्वासमु सरीएनदो कादो. Is your faith life loving the Lord beyond what he gives? Or is it just a complacency which loves what God gives? शेडरक मेषेक अबेत्न कोलमी गुट्टुनारगदा? वाले एमनारो, मा देवड़ु मम्मल्ली रक्षिंच्चदानिकी समर्तुडो. रक्षंपकपोइना. Now this is Christian devotion. ना देवड़ु नाकी इल्ली वकपोइना. ना देवड़ु नाको, वीसा यवकपोइना. नन इंडिया पंपिंचेसना. ना ग्रीन कार्ड राखपोइना, इंडियान्स की बाग लेट गोस्ते अंतकदा, ग्रीन कार्डलो. पाकिस्तानी इत्तो तोंदर गोस्ते अंतकदा. ग्रीन कार्ड राखपुते, मल्ली सिटिजनशिप गुड लेट आपोते गदा. माने अवर चप्तनार, सर्वे जेसी, इप्पुड़ अप्लाई जस्ते, सिटिजनशिप रावलंटे, कनीसम 80 years पट्टदे. Now what is our testimonies, ईरोज testimonies एन नाडुस्तुनाय? नेनु अनकुले, माम्मा की वेसा दरुक्तदे. Thirty first night. नेनु अनकुले, नाको, ग्रीन कार्ड दरुक्तदे. ओक्कासारी अला लेची, प्रपंचन लो छुडंडी. मीतपुट चाल मंदी हिंदूस की ग्रीन कार्ड चुचुंटे. मर वाले अवरका अट्रिब्यूट जायले. मीतपुट चाल मंदी हिंदूस की सिटिजनशिप चुचुंटे. वाले अवरका अट्रिब्यूट जायले. Now जीज़स इस नॉट ए मारवड़ी. मीर पदिवेलिस्ते, पदिलक्ष्य इच्छे बैच गदायना. We have made our God cheaper. जीज़स तो उन्ना गोप्पतनमेनंटे, ए देवड़ु चेले नाय जस्तडो, निनु मारुस्तडायना. There is no God in this world who can change the character of a person. ना फ्रेंड वाला अम्मा ओक्सार ना फ्रेंड नाडिगिंदे, ई प्रपंचन लाचिन्त गट्टी वस्तु एंट्रानी. वाड़ फिजिक्स स्टूडेंट अन्माता, वाड़ वेंटने चेप्सेडु, वज्रमनी. रे बडुदे काद्रांदे वाला अम्मा, लेद मम्मी, वज्रमे मम्मी अन्नाड़. काद्रा मनुष्य कुंडकायंदे. पेले नोल्गी तेलसो. मनुष्य माराडे अंता कष्टम. मीर ओका miracle पास्ट गारे देगर दिसकेल, मी बारीयन मार्चमन आड़कंडी? मी बर्तन मार्चमन आड़कंडी? अंतिन्तक वाला बारीयने मार्चमन आड़कंडी? Only Jesus can do. You know what is the greatest miracle of this world? The change of heart. मारुमनस. ओक्कासारी मारुमनस पुंडेका, you are not after money, you are not after material blessings, you are after Christ. Christ is greater than anything for you. निजमयन मारुमनस की गुर्ते अंतंते, मनमो, गिफ्ट्स कंटे गिवर नेकु प्रेमिस्ताम. अदि गुर्तु. नवचिन्त विलुवयन वस्तु कुनकुनावनको, नी बारीयनी बर्तो पगल्गोटे सरनको. निकु, विपरीतमयन कोपोन रादु, because you love them more than the valuable thing. Your reaction tells how much you love your spouse. Now deep into our heart, ईरोज मानन छूसकुनी, मानोका प्रश्न वेस्कोवाली. Are we like playboys or true husbands? Do we really love the Lord more than what he gives? Materialism उन्ना चोटा, वरी उन्तदे. Devotion उन्ना चोटा, त्रुप्ति उन्तदे. If you read first episode of Paul to Timothy, 6th chapter मीर चादिते, materialism गुरिंची मीक चाल विषयल अर्थमोताय. 6th chapter लो, Paul एम अंतरंटे, नेनु इरुकु नाक तेलसो, विषयलता नाक तेलसो. कलिमी नाक तेलसो, लेमी नाक तेलसो. नेनु गुड नेचकुनानो, इरुकुलो विषयलतगा, विषयलतन अनुभविंचनो नेचकुनानो. अने आयनोका माटनाड़, 6, 6 लो. संतुष्टि साहितमयन दायव बक्ति, गोप्पा लाभ सादकमयनदि. Godliness with contentment is great gain. Now ईरोजना, ओका प्रश्न मानो एम वेस्कोवालंटे, is my godliness really enjoying the contentment in the Lord? हबकु केमनाडो, अंजरुपचेटलु पुयकपोइना. अन्नाड़? हाँ, साला लो पसुलु, लेखपोइना, चैनलो पंटा, पंडकपोइना. मी अमेरिका बास्टल जप्पंडे दी, rewrite हबकुक. H1 वीसा राखपोइना. ग्रीन कार्ड ग्रांट अवकपोइना. सिटिजनशिप उनको 23 साउथ्सलो कोचिना. अमेरिका, अमेरिकानींच इंडियाकी वेल्लपोवल्सी वच्चना. ना कंप्लीनो, ना प्रमोशन राखपोइना. 227 नुंच अधिन्त लो उन्तुना. नेनु एहो आयन दानंदिस्तानो. That's Christian devotion. यीवनी वुद्धं चपटले नेनो. But if you stop there, then you are not a true Christian. As you love the Lord and follow him and crave for him and fall in love with him, they follow. That's what Matthew's Gospel 6, 6, Chapter 33 says. Seek he first the kingdom of God and his righteousness. What is the kingdom of God? That's his work, his ministry. What's his righteousness? That's his character, his person. What you need to seek, देनी वेदकाली, the person of Christ and the work and the ministry of Christ. If that is your focus and all things shall be added unto you. You don't need to look back whether they are coming after me or not. सुस्कोकरले, बनक्कतेरिगी. That's Christianity. Christianity is loosely attaching to the material needs and closely attaching to Christ. And if there is a clash between Christ and the material things, I can sacrifice them easily and cling on to Christ. That's Christianity. So running after miracles, running after blessings is not Christianity. Maybe मानो मारुमनस पुंडेटपुड़ू, मानकी विस्वासन चालनपुड़ू, देवड़ु आवशरम आइते, ओका miracle चेच्चे मान जीवितानिलो. ना जीवितानिलो गुड देवड़ु चाला miracles चेस्ड. बदर बख सिंह, बदर सादसुंदर सिंह, विलंदर मारे तपुड़ू miracles चेस्ड. पंडित दर्मश्प्रकाश मारे तपुड़ू miracles चेस्ड, देवड़ु. Paul मारे तपुड़ू miracles चेस्ड, देवड़ु. But continuously miracles चेले दो, वाले जीवितालो. Because they came to know the Lord. You know what is faith? Faith is in the character of Christ. Look at the classic example of faith in the Old Testament, that's Abraham. When Abraham was called by God, this God was a stranger to him. इधे वड़ अवर तेली दायनकी. But Abraham believed God. Abraham की देवड़ु जप्पिनंटे, नीकोडुकनिस्तानो. बन्ने वलेदो. आने एक्स्टीर वलेदो, आने एक्स्टीर वलेदो. प्रतिसार वच्ची पिलछी, नीकोडुकनिस्तानो, अंजप्तनाड़ गानी एवट्लेदो. 25 विवा ईयर्स वलेदो. 25 years. मीके 25 years तरवाता, वीसा इस्ते एन जस्तरु? 25 years तरवाता, ग्रीन कार्ड इस्ते एन जस्तरु? How will be your devotion, your faith life? But the 25 years एन जरिगिन्दा तेलसा, Abraham started walking with God. ई 25 years लो, Abraham ये स्ताइकी चेरे अंते, God called him, Abraham is my friend. It is not Abraham calling God, God is my friend. It is God himself calling Abraham that Abraham was my friend. Friendship with God. Friendship with God made Abraham understand the character of God. And all the 25 years, without having the son, having the promise again and again, the same promise again and again, this knowing of the character of God helped Abraham to cling on to God for 25 years to claim that promise. वरक प्रामिस कार्ड दिस्कुण्टर गदा इकड़ा? I have my reservations for that, though I come from the same assembly. But अदि आयर फुल्फिल आउपत एन जस्तर मेर? Next year, I will fulfill your promise. That is why the knowing the Lord is more important than getting from the Lord. It's a matter of God. If you have a God, you will do whatever you want. It's a business deal. Why do you have a God in South India? Deal. You do this, and I will do this. But in your relationship, here is a God, a God of the Bible, who did everything for mankind. "I want to do something." "Do it, do it." "If you do it, I will do it." That's it. He has sacrificed his life. Can you find anywhere in any religion in the whole world, a God who died for his people? You know how valuable God is? The very life of God is equal to your life. Angels will give you blessings. If you give me blessings, you will get them. What will you do? What will you do? There is sacrifice in his love. He gave himself. Now, what is devotion? What is faith life? Coming to church and asking yourself, "Lord, what do you give me?" "What can I give to you?" I will do that. I will do whatever I want. I will do this, I will do that. Can you eat? Do you have a brother? I will do whatever I want. I have a brother. Do you have a brother? Do you want him? You want him. He is here. He has a brother. I will say that. He is a king. He is a God. I have a question. Do you have a brother? He is a king. He is a king. He is a God. Now, the question that arises at this conversation is this. Do you have a brother? How do you understand that? I understand that. I understand that. But... I have a question. Do you have a brother? I have a brother. Do you know where you have a brother? I have a brother. In the first page of the Bible, you are made in the image of God. What was Jesus talking to that crowd? If you are a king, you will be a king. If you are a prince, you will be a prince. Because the image of God is on you. Now, you will do whatever you want. You will do whatever you want. You will do whatever you want. God wants you, not your money, not your talent, not your performance on the stage. But God wants you, your heart. He wants to dwell in you. I am delighted to see that. He has a brother. He has a sister. They have given you blessings. They have gone to fellowship. 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 They have not heard of it. They have not heard of it. They have not heard of it. But I want to live among them. I will do that. What was the desire of God? When Moses came to the city of David, he said, "There is a place for him." But there is a place for God. He said, "There is a place for you." And there was a time in the New Testament when Jesus came and lived among us. God wants to be friend with you. And he went to the river. He said, "He is alive." That is about the inwelling presence, ever presence of the Holy Spirit. He wants to live within you. Now, I have a question. Do you love the gifts and the blessings and the miracles of Christ? Or do you love him more than them? He said, "I have a brother." He said, "I have a brother." Christian devotion is about denominationalism. Anyone who has a brother, will ask me. Without doubt. The great mystery of godliness, the Christian deity. He is a 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 deity. Who is he? Who is he? He is Christ himself. Why godliness is a mystery? Because it beats around Christ. In godliness, Christianity is present. Christianity, Christ is at the center. Christianity, your church is greater. Don't fall into this deception, my friends. Don't fall into this deception. It is not the pattern that you should make an idol. Don't idolize patterns. Do you worship God? It's a tradition. You have a brother. He has a brother. He has a God. Yes, we need discipline. Yes, we need cramam. Yes, we need a pattern. Yes, we need some organization. But Christ should be at the center. If needed, you need to change it. The only unchangeable thing is God, Christ. What is godliness? It is above your church sanity. If you have two brothers, you have to do both. He is a Christian. A apostle is a demon. He is a God. He is a God. He is a God. What is your faith? What is Christian faith? Precious faith. A God. Many people worship him. What is a God? He is a God. Do you have a brother? Do you have a brother? He has a brother. He is a brother. Why do you have a brother? In a God, Christ is a God. It's a class apart. Why? Not because of my church, not because of my self-righteousness. Why? First Peter one, second Peter one-one says, "He is a God, he is a Christian, he is a God." It is because of the character of Christ, the righteousness of Christ, the person of Christ. You can never be saved because of your church, but you can be saved because of your Christ. No true godly man will encourage this. Do you have a brother? Why do you have a brother? Do you have a brother? Brother Buck Sing has a brother. I know that. But he did not use it because there would be a kind of worship. He hit behind the Christ. Why did he not show off? Luther said, "Why do you call yourself Lutherans? Did Luther die for you? Call yourself Christians because Christ died for you on the cross." It is not your self-righteousness nor your church righteousness that can save you, but the righteousness of Christ that can save you. Luther preached a lot. "Lord, thou art my righteousness, and I am thy sin." "He is a God, he is a prince." What happened on the cross, my friends? He has a brother. Second Corinthians five-twenty-one says, "He has a brother." But he knew not sin. He has a brother. But... He has a brother. He has a brother. If you go to Hinduism, you have a brother. You have to have a brother. You have to worship him. You have a brother. You have to have a brother. Even if you have a hundred brothers, you will know who has a brother. But Christ made it easy. He has done a lot. आयन उचितंगा पापक्षम आपन जस्तड इनकंटे मना पापमंता तन मेद की दिसकोनी तन नीति न मन मेद की ट्रांसफर जस्तड ईरोज एवढेन अतिसे इस्ते अतिसे इंचुवाडु प्रभु नंदे अतिसे इंचाली क्रिस्टियान्टी लो का वेला pride उन्ते आप pride नी spirituality निपट्टी कादु आप pride नी चर्चन निपट्टी कादु आप pride नी worship निपट्टी कादु आप pride नु पाडे पाटल निपट्टी कादु आप pride नु एन्त वरिशुदंगा जीविस्तुनान न तन निपट्टी कादु The pride is in the Lord. It is the righteousness of the Lord that qualifies me and you. सेंट अगेस्टिनो अद्भुत महिना मार्च चेप्पड What is my qualification in the presence of the Lord? ना योग्यत एन्टी देवडी सन्निदिलो नाक योग्यत लेदनी उपकोडमे ना योग्यत मनक योग्यत लेद It is because of Christ, my faith stands apart. The greatness of Christian faith does not lie in the Christian or in the church. The greatness of Christian faith lies in the very person of Christ. Therefore, Christian devotion is above denominationalism and selfishism. येसु कृष्ट वर अन्नारो नन वेम्बडिंचुवाडु लुकास वर तो पद्नाल गज्जाय मेर्स अदिते नन वेम्बडिंचुवाड एन जाली तन्नु तनु उपेक्षिंचकोवाली तन्नु तनु उपेक्षिंचकोवाली सिल्व नेत्त कोवाली एन्टी सिल्व नेत्त कोडमंटी एन्टी आयन सिल्व नेत्त कोवाला नक मुंदको मार्च चेप्पड तना सिल्व नेत्त कोन नन वेम्बडिंचाली Everybody, his own cross, her own cross. What does the cross stand for? What is the symbol of cross? Cross is a symbol of self-denial. तन्नु तनु उपेक्षिंचकोड़ा If anyone does not deny himself or herself, then he can't be my disciple. तेगेस चेप्पसड आयना तेगेस चेप्पसड आयना Unless I die, I cannot live in Christ. इक जीविंचुवाडन नेने नेन कादु ना इंदु जीविंचुवाड क्रिस्टियानी चेप्पुकोड़न अट्ट मुंदू नैन कृष्ट लो मुंद चनिपोवाली गलती पत्रिका रिंडु इरवे नरवेरालंटे रोमा पत्रिका आरु आरु नरवेराली I must die with Christ on the cross. कवला मैटेरियल ब्लेसिंग्स के देवड देखिन इच्छी मी कमली मी भक्तिक अभिसूचन नैते मुकेश अंबानी मी कंटे भक्त परड अदंतर Warren Buffett मी कंटे चाला blessed Bill Gates कोड सीआईटील निच्छे चेडंट कदा बिल गेट्स कोड मी कंटे चाला blessed अन्माता The material blessings are not the indications of God's blessings. But what is the indication of Christian devotion? The indication of Christian devotion is this, that you become like Christ one day. इनकंटे दाईव भक्तिकी संबंधिंचन अट्ट मंटी दी इरिप चाला पद्दम मर्मम अदी Great is the mystery of godliness because godliness beats around the person of Christ. ओक्क माट्ल चेप्पालंटे, godliness is Christlikeness. Let me talk about it and close. एफएससी पत्रिका नालु इरविनालु मी कौशिश सदूधतनानो In those lines, Paul Malley रास्तुनाड तिमोतिकी रास्तनाटे नीतियु यदार्धमैन भक्तियु गलवारै देवनी पोलिकगा स्रुष्टिंपबडेन नवीन स्वभावमुनु दरिंचकोनवालेन भक्तिक एन्टी सर सूचना? New nature. A nature like Christ. God-like nature. Where did you start as a human being? You started in the Garden of Eden. Where did you end as a human being? You end up in that great city, a new city called Jerusalem. Garden to city. Now, where did you start in the garden? In the image of God. In the image of God. What happened with sin? Sin tampered with your image. Sin aberrated that image. ई देवनी पोलिकनो पापम काजेसिन्दी Now, what Christ did on the cross? एदैते पापम काजेसिन्दो दनंततनी कृष्टो मल्ली कट्टपट्टाड नसिंचिन दन ने वेदकी रक्षिंचडान्की मनिष्य कुमारुडी लोकानिक वच्चड एम नसिंचिन्दी? The image of God. मल्ली आय इमेज ऑफ गॉड न मनक कट्टपट्टाडान्की Salvation is not, you know, getting a seat in heaven. That's not salvation. Salvation, the end goal of salvation is to become like God, to be the partakers of the nature of God. इदे सेकंड पीटर लो वन वन मनमिन दक चादिमो वन फोर मेर्स अदिते दुरासन अनुसरिंच्त वाल्न न कलु लोकमंदुन न ब्रष्टत्वमुन मेरू ई वाद्धानमलो मल्लीगा तप्पिंचकोनी देव स्वभावमंदु पालिवारगुनेटलुगा To be the partakers of the nature of God, we are not only saved from sin, saved from the penalty of sin, we are not only saved from the eternal fire which is the punishment of sin, but we are also saved unto becoming like Christ. मी को विषं देल्सा? एदैन वनलो मनिष्य कुन्नाट्ट मंटी देवनी पोलिकक मिंचिन पोलिका मनकी परलोकन लो उन्तंदे नूतन नैरिश्लेम लो उन्तंदे एदैन वनलो मनिष्य चनिपोगलड कनी आनूतन नैरिश्लेम लो मनिष्य की का मरन लेद एदैन वनलो आदमकी हवकी देवड़की मज्जा अनंत आगाद मुंदी कनी आनूतन नैरिश्लेम लो येसु कृष्ट नो दाईव मानवड अटुपक्क परिपूर्णंगा देवडी टुपक्क परिपूर्णंगा मानवड तंड्री मनली कलपडान्की ओक अद्भुत महिना अविनाभाव संबंधम सहवासम मनक नेरपडान्की आयन सिद्धंगा उन्नाड Do you know the value of your salvation? Salvation is not just coming and worshiping and going. You're made for eternity. You're made for the nature of God. मल्ली मनलो पापुम वल्ला पोगटकुन आरूपानी तिरिगि चूडालनी आयन तापत्रय बट्टुनाड That kind of bhakti he wants from us. रोमा पत्रिका एन्विदा वच्चाय मु इरवे इरवे तमिदा वच्चनाल एर एन्स अवतर
देवर प्रेमिंचु वार्की हम अलग आण शक्करपु चुप्पुन पियो बडेन वार्की हम मेलु कलुटकै समस्तमु समुकुड जर्गुतन आयट मनकी एम टा मेलु? य वच्चन मनो चालसाल वाडु उन्तंदा अपुर वाड्तम मनो मनक मेल एन्टी एन्टी वोकल्क मेल परेक्षल लो पासवर्ड वोकल्क मेल बेसर रावड वोकल्क मेल नीत्लो सीट रावड एन्स अल वाडु उन्तंदा य वच्चनान्नी But, वच्चनाल ने पुरु डायवस्ट एय बोड इदे प्रॉब्लम कैलेंडर लो वच्चनालकी गौडमे द वच्चनालकी प्रामिसकार्ट लो वच्चनालतो प्रॉब्लम एन्टी मनो विदाकलिस्तम वार्की मल्ली लोपल केली आ कांटेक्स्ट लो केली मल्ली चूसे ओपिका समयम मनक उन्दद इरवे तमिद सद्वंडी एन्ड तनगा हम तन कुमारुड अनेक सभोदारलो जेस्किड उन्नेटलु हम देवड़ अवरिकी मुंदू एरेगनो हम वार्क तन कुमारुडो सारुक्यम गलवार उन्तकु हम वार्की मुंदुला निव्राय इंच हम एन्टी मेलु? The greatest good for a Christian is this, to be like Christ. To confirm unto the image of that first Son, Jesus Christ. जेस्ट डायन ट्वेंटी आ कुमारु नी सौ रुपयत लोकी मनवेल्डालनी नी एन्त कालुन चर्चकोचनो एन्त आराधिंचनो ई चर्च केलनो एन्नी सारु नेनो ब्रेडलो पार्टिसिपेट जसनो ई वन्नी should end up in Christlikeness. When you are after material needs, when you are after your own self, when you are after selfish ends, you cannot taste Christ. इनके एम पडर फर्स्ट पार्ट मेरू? रुचि चूचि एरिगितनी अदलोक चरणम एम पडर कृष्टे ना त्रुप्ति आयन एन्दे ना त्रुप्ति ट्रू एना? सच्चम एना? टोसर अंदके एम अंडाडु एन्टी क्राइस्ट ला बुद्धल आण्न आड कापते पाड्तार अंडाड Christ should be my ultimate satisfaction. If my devotion is utmost to Christ, then he would be my ultimate satisfaction. My friends, you are made in such a way for eternity that your soul can never be satisfied with anything in this world but for Christ. इन्तुक अविश्वासल कृष्ट दक परकेट्टाली? वालकी लोकमल एदी इवलेंदी कृष्टे वगलुतड Is not only for heaven, but also for the earth. Heavenly life कोसम मात्रमेक कादायना, earthly life कोसम कोड ई लोकमलो पिल्डी इवलेंदी, उज्जोगम इवलेंदी, डब्बी इवलेंदी एदी इवलेंदी कृष्टे वगलुतड इनकंटे, you are made for God, made by God, made in the image of God. Unless God comes and sits in your soul, unless he befriends with you and fellowships with you, you cannot have satisfaction and enjoy human life because he is the author of life and he is the creator of thine. And you are made in his very own image. आयन सिल्व लो प्रवेश पडिन अंदके मल्ली तनलाग मी मल्ली मार्च कोडान्की दाईव कुमारुड मनलाग एन्तुक मार्डंटे मनो आयन कुमारुलाग मार्डंग कोस मनो आयन कुमारुलाग मार्डंग कोस Now, this kind of faith life, this kind of biblical Christianity, this kind of piety, bhakti जीवितान्नी देवड़ मन देखिन इच्छकोर्तुनाड May the Lord bless this word in your midst मी तलल वंच्छे वच्चिन्न प्रार्थन जस्न ने मुगिस्तानो मा प्रेम गलिं तंड्री नी पादालकी उन्दनाल Change our perspectives, Lord. Touch our minds, Lord. मीमु चुट्टू जर्गुतन दन निपट्टी विंटुन दन निपट्टी, चप्तुन दन निपट्टी मा अविप्रयालेर पर्चकोकुण्ड मा अवगाहन हेर पर्चकोकुण्ड नी वाकिन चेप्पीन दन निपट्टी नी वाकिनलो एम मुंदो मा गुरिंची दान्नी बट्टी मीमु सर्येना अवगाहन लोकी रावडान्की Right opinions नी फॉर्म जस्कोडान्की मक्रुपने वंडु प्रभाव Help us to look at ourselves and make a critique of ourselves not from the standpoint of our churches, of our fellow believers, of our preachers and pastors, but from the very standpoint of your word. Help us to wear the goggles of the Bible and know where we are, Lord, and know what we ought to become and glorify your name. Help us, Father. Commit ourselves unto the working of your Spirit unto the power of your word. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Brother Prakash and also Sister. When we hear a message like this, including me, it starts with the first scripture we read from 2 Corinthians 13 if you all open your Bibles, including all the kids. 2 Corinthians 13: Verse 5 Test yourselves to see if you are in the faith. Examine yourselves. तेलगले एम उन्तते हाँ, सोधिंचकोनी So, when God speaks to us from his throne through God's servants like brother today, God convicts our hearts, God comforts our hearts. सु मनो रेस्पांस अलावंडालंटे पेत्रो, पेत्रो, अपोस्टल कार रुणदाज्यलो स्वर्च चेप्पनपुरु अलांदर मनस्ल निरिपय एवन नाराल What shall we do now? Reflection. अद मनो एवं तंत मनस्ल नाग कोड अपुर बादर चेप्तनंटे कुन्ने लेद लेद नैन अला चैन आ, नैन जस्त अला चैन कुन्ने समर्थिंचकुण्डान उन्तंदा मनस्ल That's common. सर्टन कोड फाइट चस्तन उन्त लोपल एल नुक नवालंड डु कादु डोन्ट वरियन अंदर जरिगुन्त अद So now, trueness of heart, we know. What is truth? Right? So let's take some time to examine. चाल मावनंग ओक टू मिनट्स, थ्री मिनट्स, examine in the presence of the Lord and surrender to him. If you are defending something, that means there is something not right. ईरोज मीमली नन कन्विक चस्न नंकुण्मी हर्दयान्नी उपकोण देवड़ु न आया उन्दा greediness उन्दी or selfishness उन्दे, pride उन्दे, शमिंचु That's the right reaction. What shall we do? अंत पेत्र वनाड फर्स्ट वर्ड Repent, अंड Change of heart. That is the first word. Repent. सु मन जीतल लोकड़ देवड़ु मनको कावकास मिच्छ कदा मनो ओन्ली संडेस चेय न कादु कदा एकड़ देवन संडेल उन्त एकड़ मन इंटलायन एकड़ एन सु ईरोज देवड़ु मन तो माट्ल गावटी Let's examine ourselves. ओकर न्यूशल मावनंग मावकरिंचकन वर मावकरिंचन In the light of scriptures, देवन सन्निदिलो मन वेन्नो वाक्य बागाल निपट्टी देवड़ु मन हर्दयामलो हेचिन्चन विषयल निपट्टी मावनंग मी हर्दयामलो देवड़ु परिशोधिंचकलिन देवड़ु देवड़ु हर्दयांतरमली देवड़ु आयन तेलस आलरेडी He is waiting for you and me to confess. Commit. तीर्मान जस्कोड ईरोज देव ई विषल एते नन हेचिन्चाव न तप्पुन चुपिंचाव देवड़ी देवनी कसन्निदिलो पापक्षम आपन तो तीर्मान जस्कोड देव ने मुंद दिनालो नीकी योग्यंग For me to live is Christ निन्नु तेलस कोडान्की नी रूपमलो जीविंच्डान्की साक्षिङ उन्डालनी तीर्मान जस्कोड Put Christ as the beginning and the end, in the center. एर एते देव नंगीकरिंचले दिनक पाप दिसन दिसकोले दो देवनी अक्कम आग्नक विदेयत लेकुण्ड उन्नारो विदेयत कलियुन्डान्की आसिक्त लेकुण्ड उन्नारो लेबत्त पक्कन पड्तान उन्नारो Today is the day of salvation. रेप उन्तुदले द मनक तेलीद Today is the day. If God spoke to you today देवड़ु मी हर्दयान ताक्त ईरोज मी हर्दयान कद देवड़ी समर्पिंचकोपोत्ते चन्नपल्ले एना, पद्दवाल एना Commit your life to Christ today. देवन सन्निदिलो प्रार्थन जस्त आया नैन पापनी नु नाकोरक नाकोरक नी एकेक कुमारी लोकानिक पंपिंची नाकोरक मारनी चितिरिगिले ची ना पापन शमिंचाव नन शमिंचान ने मेरू देवन सन्निदिल आड मी हर्दयामलो येसु कृष्ट नाहवान इच्छन्दी God will come and dwell in your heart. एन्तो प्रशस्तमैन देवड़ी चन रक्षन मनक कावटी अवरो जाग जयदं Don't delay it. If you have made that commitment today to commit your life or to take baptism, नातोक आयन रवि तोकन माट्ल अंड We will counsel you. चन्नपल्ले एना, पद्दवाल एना कोड Don't delay. Don't delay. Heavenly-loving Father,[1531.46]